The public hearing is on the promoter's donation from the Jack and Dorothy Burne Foundation. For so much O R S A one ninety eight seven four twenty dash B to the Mass from Valley Regional School District in the amount of twenty thousand dollars for the Experiencing the Arts program. We have the water that is attached. And for example, is it directed or we screen the art project? Does the board have any comments? Or does the public have any thoughts?
Also, thanks to the Burne Foundation as always for helping to continue this experience for our kids. And thank you to Burne and Burton for taking this over this year, as Mr. Moore said we tried.
That's all right. And so you may not know that further, our post-public hearing at six oh one. And we will open the meeting report meeting. And if I could ask everyone to stand and join me on the floor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. Two of the meeting minutes for August tenth of twenty twenty one, for public and non-public?
Make the motion to accept the minutes from August tenth, twenty twenty one, public and non-public as presented.
Second. Discussion. Comments? I didn't have any response. All those in favor of accepting the public and non-public meeting minutes of August tenth of twenty twenty one as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Other comments? Kamala, we don't have anybody, do we?
No. Craig did the attendees.
Okay.
Ellen Wilber is right here.
Okay. So continuing business, we have the Communications Law Committee, date met on August the fifth.
So let's, um, we've talked a little bit about the survey that parents had done. We received those results as part of the reopening presentation at our last meeting. We were really happy to see, to start looking at some data based on website usage. Now that we upgraded the website, it was, it was very heartening to know that the things that we had, that we had discussed and decided were the kind of more important things to put on those easy to find buttons on the different district and school sites were in fact, the things that people were looking for. Earlier, as you can see from the draft minutes, the places on the website that people were visiting the most this summer were jobs, schools, calendars, and staff directories. So that's, that's, we're hopefully giving people what they need when they need it. Today's opening day, so did you guys do a little presentation about the app?
So we put together a video to show, but then because having everybody together in the auditorium is not super safe, they had it outside, but then showing a video outside is not super helpful if you've ever tried to look at your phone in the sunshine. Um, so we're gonna, I spoke to Amanda about it and the tech department made the video. So we're gonna put it on the website and push it out to principals because it's all information that parents and the public will find unbeneficial, but then the principal will stand to it to their staff on tomorrow when they have meetings.
Great. Well, that'll be, that'll be another great piece to use with, with the community and sharing out because that's an easy access for calendars, for lunch menus, for bus routes, or any of those sorts of things, for school board information. So that, that'll be great. Again, kudos to our, our team, especially Kamala and Craig for really spearheading this process over the last several months. And then we talked about back to school communication and has already been done. So we're good to go. Um, the next meeting will happen on October seventh.
Any questions again? So bring your notes here for Amanda.
So you do have my written report in your packet. So we did have, I didn't want to write about anything just yet until we lived through the first day. So I can safely say that today I saw a lot of happy faces. People seemed eager to return. Uh, we were outside for the entire district, um, meeting, if you will. I just felt that that was a safer solution. It's warm enough, people could at least take off their masks and socially distance. However, it was very, very warm outside. It was very warm, just a little warm. But we've tried something a little different this year. Angel Burke, the curriculum director, did put together a nice team building activity. We broke everybody into teams, they got to go out and about and do some tasks. As I told the staff, not, wouldn't have come for me, ever, ever. So it's nice to have that little balance for those people that enjoy it. There are those of us that do not, and there are those of us that do. So it was very nice to have something that I did see some pretty great spaghetti towers and such happening. So it was really good for some people. So I do appreciate all her hard work with that. Before I turn it over, Ellen Wilber is here, and I would like to give her a little bit of time in my report to discuss the future and especially what this year could potentially look like for the music program, as she's described it. I think Kamala will probably be able to pull that up. Um, it's in the informational part of your packet. But while we're getting that all put together, I will say the final portion of my report once again tells parents that meals will be free this year. We'll be sending weekend meals home on Fridays eventually when, you know, I can allow the cafeteria staff to get their food underneath them. But we've had quite a few parents ask if meals were free this year. So yes, once again, um, I want to just let parents know that the meals will be free. Um, and then just one reminder that on buses, they are a form of public transportation. So kids will be required to wear masks. We will get into the bus routes a little bit later. The buses may be fairly crowded and that may change some parents' desires. But I have not put a limitation on the number of students on buses this year. It was just too difficult last year. We did what we had to do. But at this point, we're going to allow the buses to run at full capacity if needed. So we'll get to that and we can chat about that a little bit later. But I will turn the program, my portion of the report, over to Swilber.
Hello.
You want it up on the screen?
I would love it up on the screen.
She's squeaking again. I think everybody here knows me, uh, today was day one of my thirty eighth year here in the Mass from Valley District. And I'm saying that to you because I'm a keen observer of how this community celebrates the arts and has supported the arts for all of those years, as I told Amanda when I met with her last week. The other music teacher I taught with my very first year in nineteen eighty four told me there were things that we would never have in this district because the community would never support it. And one of those things was a performing arts space. And yes, it took a long time to get it and it was not easy to get, but this community supported it and it's still the best performance space in high schools in the entire upper valley. Music has never been on the chopping block when budget time rolls around, at least not my knowledge, maybe yours, but. And as a result, we've been able to build a strong program. When I came here, there were two music teachers and about a hundred students that played an instrument or sang in chorus, grades five through twelve. That was in nineteen eighty four. In the year of twenty nineteen, just before COVID, we had about two hundred students. And we have four full-time music teachers and of course, like I said, we mentioned performing arts center. Well, this year we have about a hundred and forty kids signed up. And that's a big chunk that are not signed up, that have been in the program in the past. Now, some of those are, it's normal attrition, they changed their mind, they can't schedule it, whatever. But there are a lot of students who were upset because we couldn't have band and choral ensembles rehearse and perform last year. And so it made it very difficult. I, I did my best. I managed to keep most of my kids playing by doing lessons, either in person or remote. But the Indian River Choral Forum, for example, is decimated because he had, he could only take the kids from a certain cohort. And to spread all of those kids out, it took them three or four weeks to see every kid one time. On one of the pages there, I have some numbers, instrumental numbers. My eighth grade numbers for the last two years combined is twenty seven students. This year, those ninth and tenth graders in my high school band is only four. And again, like I said, it's, it's a pretty normal thing to lose kids, but not that many. And the, the last thing that I want to point out first is that we have a big push in education today here and all over the country. We've talked about it here today, and that's social emotional learning. And for kids in sports, that's where they get a lot of their social emotional learning in team sports and individual sports, being able to do something that they really love. And it's the same for art students. If, if I was a middle schooler today, I would have been crushed by not being able to have band and be with all my friends and be able to work as a team and put on a performance. So I'm here to ask you to consider allowing the bands and choruses to rehearse together, mixed grades, meaning like, for example, I have a seventh and eighth grade band and a fifth and sixth grade in high school. She has nine through twelve. I have a jazz band that's grades five through eight that meets in the mornings before school. And to mitigate some of the worries that we have about that, first of all, I'd like to say that a year ago, we all know a lot more today than we knew a year ago. Uh, for example, I made bell covers last year. I made them out of nylon material that I bought at Joann's fabric, cut holes in them and strung a shoestring and then tied them onto the bells because nobody was manufacturing. Today, they're manufacturing them, they're manufacturing with that Merg thirteen, um, material. And I did put in there, I talked to Dave Ellis from Ellis Music, it'll cost approximately fourteen hundred to fifteen hundred dollars to provide real manufactured bell covers for all our instrumentalists this year. And I just, I think that COVID is something unfortunately that we have to learn to live with and we have to learn to adapt to. And that's what we learned the most. Isabel today in her speech said in June, she was so happy because everything was changing and we all were taken off a mask and look where we are today. So since we don't know, I'm hopeful that setting band and chorus groups up three, at least three feet apart, keeping them in the same seats, so there's a seating chart using the bell covers, last chair for masks, my students would pull the mask down to play and they were really good about immediately putting it back up when they were done playing. And we all know kids are gonna talk in between, that's just the nature of them. And they, but they were really good. I was really proud of them for that. So I came to Amanda and she asked me to do, to come to you. I don't know if you have any questions for me, just to, you know, any concerns you might have that can help us in any way.
So I have a couple of questions. I think this is, I think you're right on in, in, in thinking about ways in which we can continue to support students who are interested in, in music because it is such an important thing. And I know it has been said, and I just said, it's, it's similar to the kids that play sports. If you were just practicing all the time and you had to do it kind of on your own or in small groups and not with everyone and never play any games, that can get demoralizing. And so hopefully we'll be able to kind of recapture some of that energy and enthusiasm with some of the students who may have found it frustrating in the past year. A, a couple of things I think that we should consider, I think looking at the, the cost for the bell covers should definitely, that, that definitely seems like something that would fall under ESSER funds.
Absolutely.
So hopefully we can, we can, we can fit that in because that seems like a good way to avoid having you also spend time sewing a bunch of, sewing a bunch of masks, doing whatever necessary to get the kids in there, I'm sure. But, um, but I think that'll be great. Do we have any sense that the increased stress and pressure in families financially has been part of the reason why there's been a decrease in the number of instrumental music players?
That's a really great question, and I'm not sure. But last spring I did ask and Deppford found about four thousand dollars and I bought eight school-owned instruments for Indian River School to have on the ready if a student says they want to play, but they can't afford it. So those are all brand new instruments I just got this summer. With that in mind, thinking that maybe, but I haven't heard specifically from anybody that, that that's the case, but it wouldn't surprise me.
Yes. That, that has definitely crossed my mind, knowing that it's, you know, if you're not making the, if you don't have, happen to have a instrument hanging around from prior use in the family, then those, those fees for the monthly rentals can, can definitely add up. And then the other thing, the attrition, especially moving from the middle schools to the preschool programs, I'm sure that was exacerbated by the double whammy of COVID and scheduling for last year.
Absolutely.
And so again, hopefully that is something that maybe will come back with the conversations that are happening and the work that's, that continues to go around, scheduling at the high school to allow for, for students to pursue their passions.
Right.
And, and whatever that is, whether that's AP classes, music.
Right.
Both. You know, there's lots of that sort of stuff. Or the tech center, being able to put all of that in is, is gonna be, intended to be very important. And the last thing I'll mention is that the Children's Hospital at Dartford, Hitchcock recently put together their, updated their school recommendations. And one of the things that I noted was this passage, "We note that full in-person learning entails participation by families, parents, and the community in the school lives of the students, including spectators for artistic, dramatic, and athletic events with the prevention strategies as above." So again, I think that, that, that also points to kind of public health support.
Right.
At least within our, within our communities for finding ways to be creative and to, and to allow for kind of the resumption of normal activities in the, in the school community. So I'm, I'm looking forward to music and drama productions as being part of that.
Thank you for putting this together. I, I really like the creativity you put into this and all that. On that note, are you planning on being able to go outside at all? Any of the teachers, not just you, or any of them? I don't know where the space exists.
Some, some teachers will. You know, for music, I mean, if it's possible to go outside in the first month.
Yeah.
Then once it gets cold in winter, it's pretty hard to do that. And my largest group in middle schools, about thirty-nine students. So my thought was if it gets a little bit too tight, the gym is empty that period. So I mean, that's a whole nother level of noise issues for the rest of the school. So, but.
All right, cool. And then just, I was just thinking of this when Danielle was talking about, you know, the drop and it does the cost, like for cost for students. I know that having rented an instrument for a kid, I think you get four years to rent it. And then Ellis is like, you have to make a decision, do you either buy it outright or do you upgrade or something else? So I, I can see how after eighth grade, a lot of students would be left with the decision, what do I do?
Right.
And so I don't know if there's anything we can do to like work with Ellis to keep people renting until the end or something like that. Because it's a big difference from going like twenty bucks a month for a trombone to all of a sudden like, okay, now if you want to buy it, it's four hundred bucks, like that, you know what I mean? So just a thought on that.
Okay.
But, but yeah, I would really love to see what we can do to recapture some of those numbers at high school. And I don't know if she's doing any outreach to any of the kids that are in ninth and tenth grade this year.
She has been.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Good.
She plans on doing more.
I know the one tenth grade. So I would love to see that number increase. And, and it's just, oh yeah, I think the scheduling really did it in. And like, if there's any way those kids can participate, maybe they can fit into their schedule now, but they can, if there's something happening after school or, I don't know, some way to connect and stay in touch until they can open up their schedule. I don't, I don't know, but.
Well, I think she wants to try to do the pep band football games again this year, which I hope will be of interest.
That'd be a good in. Yeah. Well, thank you.
Okay, anyone else have questions?
What about, what about the band room at the high school with that conflict with, when you want to bring your IRS kids over and use that room instead of the gym at the IRS? That, would that work? Because I, that is a noise problem if you, you're in the gym.
Well, we have seventh and eighth grade band five times over the course of two weeks. So it's basically every other day for two weeks. And, and by the time we got over here and everything, I think that would be, probably eat up a lot of our time. And plus she has, her schedule, she has band last week and today, so our bands are both at the same time. It probably won't work.
So that room that usually is not, not big enough?
No, I think it is. I actually think it is. One of the things that the other music teacher and I were gonna do tomorrow was I bought these Velcro dots to go on the floor and we were gonna space them all out by at least three feet and see how many we could fit and create kind of grid system so we can tell the kids where to sit and all that stuff.
Do we need any type of motion or any further this, Amanda? Would you prefer some?
I feel like it's a little bit of a, well, it wasn't really in the reopening plan. Really wasn't covered in that. So I just think we're looking for the board's approval. I don't know if you need an official vote, but might not hurt to take one, just to allow Ellen to do, to move forward with her plan, to allow Megan, to allow Amy, you know, to allow Dr. Lorenz to move forward.
And to put them cross grades.
Yeah.
That's not really the right answer for me. And also to allow for the extra or whatever they need to be used.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Rob will already be looking into that.
Okay, good. All right. So, so it's important, if you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the music COVID plan as presented by Ms. Wilber.
Any questions? Thank you. We, we had some concerns also through last year and your point in your, your book in regards to the athletics and that was the challenging, the challenge spot. We didn't want anyone to be locked out, so I'm so glad we moved forward with this.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we have motion on the table to accept the plan as presented. And all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Upstaged?
I'm sorry, Cookie, I didn't hear who seconded that. Okay, thank you.
Amanda, did you have anything else?
Oh, uh, wait, I did have something else.
I think there's room for bell covers, the Merg ones that you had mentioned, in the ESSER grants, so we're definitely looking to.
Okay. Well, from Ellis Music, the sound was a very cool.
Okay, great. Let me know.
I don't remember what it was, Cookie. It'll be okay.
All right. You remember? Yes. All right. So today we also have the business administrator, who is Robert.
Good evening. I did write a short report in your packets there. I'm still quite new here, so I'm still getting to know everybody and the ins and outs of the district, but I'm really excited to be here and we're getting off to a good start. We had a great day today, had a lot of people and I think everybody is excited to come back. And so we're moving forward. We have fresh picks ready to go with our food service for the year. And of course, as we mentioned already, school lunches will be free to all students in the district this year. One little side note, and I think we've already covered this in our website and notifications, but just in case anybody asks, we still need people to fill out applications for free and reduced lunch because it's still part of the calculation from federal and state nutrition aid. So just wanted to raise the note that's still a thing that we have to do. And other than that, I think we're in good shape.
Any other needs, Robert? Educational funding?
I have no updates at this time. I don't, I don't have any updates. That was not a case study.
Well, thank you. Public comment response, I think we're all set with that.
I think we're all set with that.
And continuing business, and the last one is bus routes and driver update.
So we did have a, some conversations with Butler. They said typically the last two weeks before school is when everybody quits. Unfortunately, they did lose two more drivers and there was two that were already down. So they have to rearrange some bus routes. They took Route three and one, took Route three and divided it between one and fourteen. So they did some shuffling around. They've also combined five and fifteen, seven and nine. They've also added a couple of new stops for the families. So they've tried to shuffle things around with a driver shortage. And just a note on that, I, several years ago, I went to a transportation workshop that were business administrators. And even back then, bus drivers were in short supply and it was a nationwide. So this is nothing new, this is pre-pandemic. So Butler's gonna do the best they can to move things around and patch it back together. And I think last time we also mentioned Tunnel Hill Road. I had the pleasure of driving Tunnel Hill Road recently.
And you survived.
I survived, you know. I mean, it wasn't bad and there were, there was equipment in the road. They'd just done the drainage ditches on both sides. The end where it comes out, I'm sorry, I'm not from around here, Cardigan Mountain Road?
Yes.
That end of it, there was still equipment. So they are doing road improvements along that. I'd like to, I have a call into Butler, but I'd just like to have another conversation with them regarding, I don't know if they have to drive the whole road directly or if there's even back around, because we do have a stop at one end and a stop at the other end. They can turn around and then do cross road.
Okay, so that's where the problem comes in.
Right, I'm, yeah, I don't, not sure of your trajectory.
There's multiple buses that are in that area.
Okay.
That's the problem.
All right. So we'll do work on that soon. But so far, Butler's trying to do the best they can with shorter drivers.
So the assessment was that there was no safety concerns?
Not that I know of, no.
Well, the major concerns that I have is that the road does not meet the tax five standards for state of New Hampshire. Because of the amount of ditching that they've done, they've narrowed the road down to twelve feet and each was to be twenty-six feet. And there's a part on the Cardigan Mountain roadside that's been washed out for going on, this is the third summer. And that is partly asphalt and gravel. And there are no signs up telling you that the road goes down to one lane. And there's no way to pull over for a bus coming down the hill or an oncoming vehicle. It's just a dead stop for road vehicles.
Yes, I remember driving on that part now that you mentioned it.
Yes, and with ice and associated, you can see it's very icy in that section.
Cool.
So.
A little light drizzling.
The way they've done it now, there's there's no room for snow removal. And if the truck tries to push it over, you're going to end up in the trees.
So I think Rob will be able to give those exact points to Connor. I think you're due to speak with Connor tomorrow?
Yes.
So he'll he'll relay those concerns, definitely.
Thank you. What would call it, this is just an idea, Connor, if you drive a bus out there too, so.
Absolutely. That's how we handle River Road too.
You should take a ride on a bus with him out there so you can actually see, you know, our real world, what a road looks like.
Right.
With extended mirrors and nowhere to go.
Trees coming on, you're like this.
Right, yeah. Denwits.
Denwits.
Yeah, and it then, you know, if you look at that crossroad, not just title of crossroad, the one, there's way up the trend to go down, you know. So it's it's a complicated area. I don't really mean we have them on all routes, but not when they're in particular.
So we're looking for approval on these. I do think we need these routes approved, Cookie. My concern is that I know parents are hoping that the board would keep these routes to less than an hour. You start to look at some of the routes, there's no way to do that now that we've had to double up. So I do think the public does need to be aware that there are some rather lengthy routes. We've got, you know, one route scheduled to end at four twenty-five. I've got another route scheduled to end at four thirty-nine, you know. So that could potentially cause an issue. Some routes ending at four o'clock, which is okay, right? That still keeps us under the hour. You know, some kids at the elementary level getting on at three fifteen or three twenty-five at Kanan, it still would put them at close to an hour on the bus. But some of your IRS kids or the high school students may be on the bus for a little bit longer. But I will say that these are temporary. I'm assuming that the four thirty-nine route would be the first route that would be split up. I know Rob will have that conversation, you know, with Connor at Butler's to make sure that that long route is ended quickly, right? I don't want kids on the bus at six fifteen and getting off at four forty. That's a pretty long ride if you're on it for the whole thing. So I at this point, I think it's the best we can do. But I would ask that the board approve that, knowing that there are certain downfalls in these bus routes. Because we would like to get these posted on the website as soon as possible so parents could plan, prepare, maybe carpool if they so choose.
Yes, so the bus route could possibly be amended if the staffing shortage was not an issue?
Yes, so you're seeing, if you look at bus routes, twelve and seventeen, it's the second to last one, that bus starts, you know, they start at three oh five, they end at four, you know, thirty-nine. They start in the morning at six thirteen and get off the bus to this at seven forty-five. That's a long ride for some of these kids. So in my opinion, and what I would have Rob convey to Butler's, is that when they, the next driver they hire splits this route up, right? And then we start to look at the five fifteen run if necessary as the next route to get split back up because that's the second latest.
So how does this affect the contract that we have with Butler? Because in that contract, it was based on X number of drivers and X number of buses.
That is correct. So we receive a credit for any runs that they don't complete. So Rob will be in touch with Connor at Butler's so that we will know that when the bill comes in, they should be deducting at this point three full runs from us because they're unable to complete those.
Those are three runs that are doubled up.
We receive a credit.
Okay, yeah.
Yes.
I feel very strongly that they will be deducting a credit.
Oh, absolutely. No, they've been very good, very, very good about it. Yeah. Let me check.
And the drivers that are on these routes that are doubled up, you know, they know, they're familiar with the route. So, you know, they'll try to tidy them up as we go on, hopefully. But we do have people that are in the works for training, so. You know, there is potential to have somebody hopefully be down piped on and fully within the next thirty, I'd say thirty to forty days, so. At least the state's not holding us up this time.
That's good.
So, right now, like. Is there any other questions on the bus routes?
The bus routes also, you know, have a couple of notes on here that I'm assuming will be cleaned up at the, you know, after the first three weeks of school. Things like a couple of times a week or no rider. Right, yes. Things like that. So those might be stops that can be taken away. Exactly. Or some stops will be condensed. Because there's a few on here that I already see, you know, that they all get to go to the same stop, but you have to individualize their house because they're one, two, and three. And they all just stay at one spot, you know what I'm saying? So, yeah. It makes it look longer, and every minute on here adds a lot of time. You wouldn't believe that one does, the bus time it does.
Yeah. So. All right, so if anyone wants to make a motion to accept these bus routes as presented?
Actually, before you do that, I noticed my house is not on there for my kids, so I'll talk to Martha about adding that in.
Yeah, or call on Butler's directly or call, yeah.
All right, so I just want to make sure.
You have to bring them to school.
I may bring them, I may bring them to school because they're all that heavy, that very, very crowded bus, so.
Yeah.
Just for the, just for everybody else to see. Anyway, so I'll make the motion to approve the bus routes as presented for the beginning of the year.
For a second? Second, thank you. Second, any further discussion? Nothing further, all in favor, signify the same.
Aye.
Aye. The fifth? Are you saying?
The ones that are doubled up, can they all have the word temporary in front of them? Because right now, I'm only seeing one of them say temporary.
Yeah, I, some, that's how they were sent to us.
Okay.
So I want to confirm that they feel that those are temporary.
Yeah, yeah. So the last one.
Which route is yours?
I have a.
Five fifteen.
No, seventeen, twelve and seventeen.
Nine.
Not here.
Oh, yours.
Mine, mine, mine. Twelve and seventeen.
All right. Which one's first?
I don't know.
I didn't know, I asked Cookie, Mark, which one is first?
Five fifteen. We have a, on a new business, we have an EBS transfer of funds request from Harrison.
So I believe in your packet, you have the email from Harrison. He is looking to transfer between functions. Let's hope I get it right. So he is looking to move some money from his eleven hundred line, which is for students. And so that would be replacement classroom furniture to purchase two L-shaped desks for the front office. So we would need board approval to do that.
Very good.
Oh, Mr. Little is on, very good. Thank you, Mr. Little.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I am.
Great, thank you. So every year, we budget to do a replacement, a complete classroom replacement of furniture just to have it in the rotation. You know, typically, the majority of my teachers want their kids at tables. That's not a possibility this year. We have all kids K through four, not preschool, but K to four, at desks. I could use a few more desks, but I don't really want to order a bunch more desks and then have them warehouse forever after when we're able to put things back to where we would like them to be. And the idea of ordering more tables now and just storing them in the shed doesn't really appeal either. So I don't think we're going to expend all those funds or have need for them this year for the typical use. But we did just do some work to our front office, and we now have two staff persons working up there in that front office. And this space could be more functional if we had different furniture in there. Right now, they're working at some pretty little, pretty old, pretty beat up desks, and I'd like to be able to give that front office a new look and more functionality.
Thank you. Anyone have a question? Anything for Harrison? Any motion?
Make a motion that we approve the transfer of four thousand two hundred ninety dollars and forty cents from line eleven hundred dot seven three seven to two six two oh dot seven three three for the front office furniture for EBS.
Second, definitely take two for the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify the same.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions. And that helps as you end this. You're all set, Harrison, thank you.
Thank you for your support, I very much appreciate it.
You're welcome.
With the new business, accepting the experience in the arts.
Oh, right.
It was just listed under the, about hearing and not under new business.
Oh, would be, well, good.
Let's put that out there right now.
Make the motion to modify the agenda by adding a voting item on the Jack McDorothy Burn Foundation donation for Experience in the Arts. My motion is to amend the agenda.
Remanding the agenda to accept putting on this Experience in the Arts program. Any discussion? All in favor, signify the same.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions. And that helps as you end this. Is there a second?
Yes, it was Danielle. Okay, thank you.
So next on the agenda will be the Experience in the Arts program.
I'll make the motion to accept the generous gift from the Jack McDorothy Burn Foundation the amount of twenty thousand dollars for the Experience in the Arts program for upcoming school year.
Second, all right, so it is Danielle. Any discussion?
Thank you as well.
Yes, right?
Very, very decent.
All in favor of the motion, signify the same.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions. And that helps as you end this. Yes. School readiness report?
Ready?
Schools are ready. No, our facilities look great. You know, we were able to make sure that it was closer this year than it has been in other years as far as allowing teachers back into the buildings floorwise, you know, waxing wise. But I think we've done a great job. We are ready to go with our orders of, you know, disinfectants and other cleaning. We're going to continue that cleaning process as we have all throughout last year. You know, the teachers look ready and happy. We've had to break hearts and tell people, no, you can't have your tables. You must have kids at desks, you must be at least three feet apart. More at the elementary school, they've done a really good job in social distancing. It does mean though that teachers are still unable to have certain things back in their classrooms. And that has been rough. Teachers thought like they would get a lot back in, right? I can get all my, you know, computer tables back in, I can get my beanbag chairs and my rocking chair and all those things that you use when you're an elementary school teacher. And that just wasn't the case. So we still do have a large amount of furniture and other things in storage. I did allow rugs to go back in at the elementary school, so there was one win, right? So the rugs, the small rugs are back in. But otherwise, we are in good shape and we are ready for the kids.
Any questions, Amanda? And last, please, Dorchester Budget Committee.
So this is on here, I did speak with Will Phillips at the New Hampshire School Board Association. And he gave us the legal advice that the board would be, it would be great if the school board is able to help recruit, if you knew someone from Dorchester, if you wanted to attend a select board meeting, if you wanted to do any of those things to help recruit someone. Because we did have Melanie Sala resign her position, they moved out of town, I believe. So if there was any connections or any way the school board could help support the budget committee, that would be great. What we would need from any interested candidates would be a letter of intent or interest, and that would be sent directly to me. I would bring that to the first meeting of the budget committee, and they would then select from the letters and from the interested candidates, the new representative from Dorchester.
Okay.
That's the process.
Yep, so that's the process. And I don't know, Cookie, if you're able to go to a select board meeting and speak or something like that, just get that out in public.
I've been trying to talk to different ones, but, I don't know, it's not the most.
It's hard to talk.
So I will go to the next board meeting and. Give my spiel, see what we can do, right?
Yeah.
I know we could probably put it on, post it on the website and with the information, send it to a lot of directors, to Amanda and so forth, so. I don't know, so.
On the district website.
Well.
And also Dorchester.
Dorchester has a website too, so. They also have a Facebook page, which is not an official town page, but a lot of people look at that, so. I'm hoping that we might be able to do something that way through social media to get the word out.
I think it would be good, good, like a post on the district page, if it makes sense.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and change the items for the next meeting? Anyone have anything in particular besides ready reports, that would be a week reports for a state enrollment in local tracks?
I have to have four, and I think it should be at this meeting. It should be either at this meeting or the first meeting in October. I think the second meeting in September is going to be a little heavy with things. But I need approval on all the resolutions that go for the New Hampshire School Association because their delegate assembly is now in October seventeenth or nineteenth, whatever that Saturday is. And so they're flipping it back to fall after doing January for many years. So this is the one for this year is going to be in the fall, but the resolutions are out. You should have received them in your emails. If you didn't let me know, drop me a line, and I'll be happy to send out copies to you. Our resolution is the first one on there, so that's cool. And I will just give you an update on that. They did not support it as a resolution, but they support it in concept. And they said that if it's approved as a resolution, that it won't. Because the resolutions are really for like, how should they proceed legislatively and things like that? But they would take that, like if we approved it, they would say, okay, then we will just do this. So that was cool.
Anything else for the agenda?
You want that, Tim, on the next one or?
Either the next one or the first one in October.
When would you like it, Tim?
Let's do it next time.
Okay.
Like that way, if everybody reads them ahead of time, and we can just kind of like flip through them.
Yeah.
Quickly and then vote on if, you know, people have, we'll vote on them all together unless people want to pick one out and discuss it separately, but it shouldn't be too bad, so. I appreciate the guidance for sure.
That's right. Okay, anything else for the agenda? Public comment? Hello.
Hi, dear, good evening. My name's Tiffany Beavro, I'm the mother of an incoming freshman, and I was hoping there would be more people here, but apparently not. So I would like to request the board reconsider their mask mandate. As you've heard and as you all know, COVID is not going away. I'm not going to debate the science. Studies show masks work, some studies show masks don't work, so that's not what I'm here for. I'm just asking for the board to let parents and children decide and make the choice that is best for them. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Dan?
Yeah, just a quick one. Theater programs around the state are having the same problem as the music programs are. I was at a meeting two weeks ago with about fifty directors around the state. They're seeing the same thing. They basically lost a year. You know, which means, you know, all those incoming freshmen never got into theater programs in high schools. So they're trying to go forward this year as best they can. The idea right now is to actually have theater festival in the spring. Last year, it was completely virtual. Basically, they videotaped your show, you sent it in. So they're looking to go back. What they may end up doing is having smaller groups rather than there being ten shows there for a day. You show up, you do your show, you leave. Keep the, the issue is the audiences. That's really the big issue. I mean, even a six hundred seat like this, if you've got four or five shows for a theater competition, plus the parents show up, and then you can't socially distance at that point. So that's what the state organization is looking at doing. They're also hoping to have workshops again to help get this moving because the issue is, is to say. So that's what the state organization is looking at doing. They're also hoping to have workshops again to help get this moving because the issue is, it's the same as music. These kids practiced last year. Most of them were not able to perform. Large musicals never got performed. So hopefully by spring, maybe some of this will be cleared up.
I hope.
Yeah.
Anyone else have a comment? We don't have anyone we need to read. I don't have Harrison, Marcus, or Ken now, and Stella.
Probably turned off the computer on.
Alright, do we have any non-public today?
Oh, we do. In front of you, I do have two nominations. These are simply transfers. So you'll see that Bridget LaVelez is going from the Enfield Village School. We had a student relocate to Canaan, so she will be following that student. And then Lori Stevens is going from EBS to the Indian River School to help them out. So just two simple transfers.
Which is nice, but not often can you move and keep your educator with your campus. Really nice. I'm glad you're able to do that.
Good luck.
Motion on the nominations?
I make a motion that we approve the nominations as presented.
Second.
Question? None? All in favor, senior vice saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstention. Great. Do we have any non-public today?
We do for purpose of hiring.
Make a motion to go non-public in accordance with RSA 91.3, 12, 7.
Two, there's two here.
You'll play your hand.
Wait, give me one first. Or last, I don't care.
First to go.
Yes.
Jim Joseph.
Yes.
Danielle Thompson.
Yes.
Stephanie Stacy.
Yes.
Can I just start?
Yes.
We are non-public.
Thank you.
Bye, Robert.
Good night.
Good night.
Have a good night, thanks. First time tonight.